Elected officials meeting. Today's date is August twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five. The time is nine A.M. In attendance are Commissioners Eberlein, Duncan, and Matarri. I also want to note that we have our coroner, Dr. Duke Johnson, our prosecuting attorney, Stanley Mortenson, our clerk, Jennifer Locke, and Jill Smith from the treasurer's office. So, thank you all for being here. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. Public comment? Hearing none. We will go to our first business item. Performance indicators, strategic planning outside contractor. It's a discussion item. And this is something that I've kind of been harping on for quite some time. And I thought what we could do is just, first of all, no large organization, no small organization can run without reports to tell you what's happening within your organization. And usually, there are metrics that are associated with that. Workload is one, number of events per employee, things like that, which helps make the case for when you need to add staff. And we all know this is a growing community. But saying it's a growing community as to why I need to add staff is not the same as, here's my workload per staff member for this particular job function. We've exceeded what would be a reasonable amount. And this is the numerical case for why we need to add more staff. Every time we add staff, we add to the overhead, which is a requirement year in and year out moving forward to be able to pay for the staff. Contracts, on the other hand, we don't have to renew those, but staff, we do typically, especially if there's a workload. And so, I think it's important that we at least, you know, investigate what's involved with understanding metrics within our own organization. Now, the county just happens to be a mere hundred twenty million dollar operation. For some people, that's a drop in the bucket. I think for most of us here, that's a pretty significant dollar amount. And so, being able to articulate that numerically is an important function. So, unless anyone has any questions, I invited Jeremy Williams with, I believe it's North Star or C-Star.
Star of the Sea.
Star of the Sea, excuse me. And just to kind of give a little presentation to talk about just some of the benefits of metrics, how they can help organizations. He's actually been able to help some organizations with just developing greater efficiencies so that those organizations can do more with the amount of money that they have. And so, I thought it would be appropriate just to, just spend a couple of minutes, have him talk about it, and then see if there's any questions that could be answered. So, unless there's any objection, or any commissioner has, or anyone else here has a thought, I'll just hand it over to Jeremy, and he can take it away.
I appreciate it. It's awful. I don't get myself. I don't know, do I need to record it somewhere? Is it green? It was when I pushed it back. Oh. And then it turned, it's green now.
Okay.
And then it goes off.
Should I give him this?
Yeah, why don't you do that? That'd be great. Thank you.
Now you can hear me. Okay. Well, good morning, everyone. Thank you, Bruce, for bringing me in. I really appreciate it. So, my firm is Star of the Sea Consulting. And I'm here to talk about this performance metric during a needs assessment of the county. Okay? So, a little bit about me and a little bit about my expertise. I'm not going to go too far into the weeds, but I am a retired coasty. So, I don't know if we have any Coast Guard families or any prior service coasties in the...
Go Navy.
I'll forgive you. So, I did fifteen years in the Coast Guard as an operations specialist. So, I did mission planning, operational planning at a high-level command center place, figuring out processes on how to persecute and execute the thirteen different missionaries of the Coast Guard. When I retired from the Coast Guard, I brought, I was brought on to do manpower analysis, staffing analysis for the Army. So, I was trained by USAMA, which I don't know if you know anything about the Army, but they're kind of like the chief experts for manpower, workforce analysis, and all that. So, I was able to hone this skill and really develop this and master the skill of doing staffing analysis, workforce analysis, and all these things that kind of Bruce was talking about. In my time in the Army, I dealt with over four hundred different stakeholder engagements with different directorates of the Army, different work centers, responsible for multimillion-dollar decisions. When you talk about people, positions, staffing, all this kind of stuff. So, really, why I'm here and what I would love to do is to conduct a needs assessment for the county. So, it's not every day that you live somewhere, because I live in Cooten County. I actually am living in Coeur d'Alene. So, I'm a taxpaying citizen of this county. So, it's not every day that you get to live somewhere and then be able to contribute a very specific skill and talent that you have to the benefit of the county and to the benefit of the area that you live in, right? I've got five kids, so I want to see this area thrive, not just survive. I have an investment with where I live. So, this needs assessment for the county comes through personal engagements, right? So, it's, it's meeting one-on-one, learning what the department's doing in the county, getting an idea of how the work is done. And really, the ultimate goal is to validate the county, right? Go through a needs assessment, validate the county, quantify what's working well, and provide reports on what could be maybe done better, right? But it's really just putting the report and the backing and the paperwork to, here's what the county does, here's what we do as departments, here's what we're doing as elected officials, here's how we're serving you to people. And it's not just an anecdotal story. It's not just us talking about it, but here's an actual report putting it to paper of what we're doing. Okay? So, the assessment is about giving departments clarity and confidence in helping showcase the work that they're already doing and backs it up with objective validation. My role is to provide an independent perspective that strengthens trust between departments and elected officials while preserving relationships. We confirm staffing structures, highlight what's working well, and identify small adjustments that can reduce bottlenecks and keep momentum strong. When workloads outpace capacity, we help pinpoint the causes and provide practical solutions. Beyond numbers, we also do a Leadership Three Hundred and Sixty, which is incorporated into a piece of it that I created as part of the firm. It's a leadership assessment survey. It's a small piece of it that really helps develop a leadership of a body as well. The goal is simple. It's to elevate every department, providing recognition, validation, and support so the entire county can grow stronger together. So, that's kind of why I'm here. That's what I would like to do. I would like to leverage my talents and my skills for the good of the county. There's a lot on this slide. I'm not going to leave it for long, but it's basically just a bunch of academic cited metrics of doing these kinds of studies are efficacious. And they mean, they mean something, and they do a lot, right? So, the employee engagement drives a measurable ROI. Every organization, it's, it's pretty well-known that every organization can go become more efficient by ten to fifteen percent right off the board. We're not even really looking at any details, so there's always a need. There's always a need. This is just a little bit about my firm and some of the things and some of the ways that we would do the assessment, some of the pieces that go into the assessment. Right, there's a workforce staffing analysis. You can do the workload mapping and validation. We can look at backlog and process optimization. Again, there's that leadership and management consulting with the Navigators Council. And then it pushes towards data-driven decision support, right? So, it's looking at the reports, looking at the data, and having me assist with where we should go with this, how can we use this, how can we implement it. The methodology slide is, again, really simple, and I'm not going to leave it for long. I don't want to take too much time up here. I'm more better at answering questions than I am presenting. So, with every way that we can conduct this assessment, there's always going to be a training component. There's always going to be an in-doc. And then there's a couple of different ways that you can actually collect the data. And then throughout the process, there's staff reports. So, it's not just a, you're off and running, and we're never going to talk to you until after it's done. There's, there's a post-check as we go through it. That's a standard operating way that I do in a methodology. And then, again, I'm better at answering questions than I am presenting. So, that's me. And I just really would love to help assess the county, validate the county, and, like I said, give all the elected officials and give the county something to stand on, paper-wise, report-wise, that is solidified, it's quantified and validated from a third-party, independent, qualified source that says, we're doing the right thing. We're doing a good thing. We're on the right track. I think everybody else wants that, too. I think elected officials, you guys ran for office because you wanted to do something good for the county. You wanted to be a part of the county. You wanted to be a part of the success of the county. So, that's me, I guess, yielding to your good interior motives. Are there any questions for me? How did you, was that five, so minutes?
It was relatively quick. Thank you.
Okay.
Any questions?
Have you ever helped out with a law firm or a prosecutor's office?
Hey, Stan, can I get you to put the microphone on?
I'm prosecuting attorney Stanley Mortenson. Have you ever done work with, at a law firm or a prosecutor's office?
In this capacity?
Yes.
No, but I've, I've worked in the law office when I was in the Coast Guard before I got out. I was, I was a clerk assistant type of thing. So, I'm familiar with the law office, but in this capacity, no, I had not.
And Steve, did you want to...
I'm Steve Matheson, County Treasurer. This is a difficult question, but put yourself in the, your head as a citizen. What kind of metrics would you expect as a citizen that we would, we would be developing?
Yeah, so, I'll put myself in that place because I am in that. I think Bruce said it really, really well. I think as a citizen who pays taxes in the county, who knows this county is growing so rapidly, and there's a lot of challenges that come with that growth, I would want to see, and I do want to see, how the effort is being placed and how the effort is being leveraged against the people that's there, right? So, I think Bruce said it really, really well. There, and this is not just with this county. I think this is just a visual thing with business in general and just staffing and manpower in general. When you have a rapid amount of growth, you tend to hire a bunch of people or hire more people to kind of stop the bleeding. It's kind of like a tourniquet approach. And then it's not till much later that you stop and go, okay, well, now we've got all these people that are doing all these things. We did that in the period of growth. Do we still need them? So, then you go back and you look and you assess and you do the study. So, I would, I, as a taxpaying citizen in the county, I would want to see and make sure that the local government that I'm a part of, that I'm raising my family and that I'm contributing taxes to, is running efficiently and running effectively and has what they need in order to serve me and all the other people in the county.
Pause question?
Yeah.
Do you have any examples or, yes, examples of other counties or cities that do a good job of this?
I'm having a hard time hearing, other counties or cities that what?
That do a good job of this, that actually have gone through a process where they perform what you're proposing or something similar to that.
Yeah, so there's Prince County in Virginia was one of the big ones that I was able to find. So, Prince County in Virginia went through, and they have available online through public record, a huge report that shows their county, all their departments, all the FTEs for their departments, and how they relate to other similar-sized counties, both in Virginia, but then they actually picked a couple that are somewhere else in the nation, right? So, there's all these charts that show, here's Prince County, and then here's the other counties. So, that's, that's a metric, and that's a report that would be baked into the way that I would present it here to the county, right? It wouldn't be a standalone, well, we're going to look at Cooten County. Here's where we stand without any kind of peripheral guide. So, yes.
And if I could just add to that, you know, one of the things that we, I think, don't do enough of is establish a measurement of what we have today. And that, you know, and I think if I have a fellow board member that disagrees, you know, certainly speak up. But I think that we generally want to help solve elected officials' problems. But when the request comes in for money, well, what is that money going to get you, right? Because if we can't articulate that to the citizens outside of, I need it, outside of, we're growing, outside of some anecdotal story, then it becomes very difficult to make that case to people. And I know just from my own personal experience, when we were able to articulate down to the dollar how much it costs to recruit and train a deputy, how many deputies we were losing, how much in recruiting and training money we were losing as a result of that. That was just evaporating because deputies were going to, they were leaving, in essence. You can make the numerical case why it makes sense to pay them a competitive wage so that we can retain them and we retain the knowledge. So, there's a measurement factor of where we are today. What does this additional money buy you? And then we go to the community and say, by giving this extra money, this is what you are going to, in essence, get in return for it. And I think that's the challenge. And so, if we could start having some measurement today of what we're doing, of, you know, where we are. And if you look at community development, it's a good example. I mean, they had a turnaround time of ninety days on their permits. And they would come before the board saying, we're overwhelmed. We need more staff. Well, I spent a few minutes with them flow-charting their workflow. And they're, not only were they able to reduce that from ninety days down to around twenty, but they've been eliminating staff ever since, you know? And so, I would argue that if we could start to show that, we could start to have just a little extra outside eyes looking at this. And I'm not suggesting that we use Star of the Sea Consulting. Jeremy just happens to be here, and he has an active interest, excuse me, in this type of activity. But more because we sometimes, in our own organizations, cannot be objective. And having outside, fresh eyes look at it, just to say, hey, you know, are we doing this right, can make a big difference. I know with my own business, I am always looking for people who can bring a fresh perspective because they see what's happening in other organizations. And I get the benefit of their experience of what they see work successfully in other organizations when I retain them. And so, that ultimately is really, you know, what's driving, at least from my perspective, why I think as a county government, we should start looking at that. So, we can really make the numerical case why more money should be put into the budget if we're not meeting established service levels.
With that said, the only thing I'd throw out there would be that maybe we could implement this or test it on a particular EO or a particular department, see how it goes before we, you know, release it out to everybody. And I think I'd be willing to be that volunteer if you guys want to go down this path. But I think it's a good idea.
Well, I appreciate that. And I don't, I wouldn't suggest this being something that everyone just dive into headfirst. But I would suggest that it works best if everyone does decide that they want to participate in it. I know we all want to say we're running the most efficient departments we can, but there's a difference between saying that and showing that. And that's been my big challenge personally, is that, don't tell me, show me. No different than the Jerry Maguire movie, right? Show me the money, right? Show me. Don't tell me. And that, in essence, has been the challenge. And so, I appreciate that. And maybe that's something we could talk about offline a little bit. And also, to your point, Stan, about law offices, you know, it's not so much the type of work because everyone wants to say that they do their own work. What it is, is it's about capturing events and then reporting those events in a numerical way. So, it's not necessarily the work. It's the event, in essence, that you're trying to capture. And that, in essence, is how you get your reports.
I have a question, Bruce. Do you envision this as the board of county commissioners would contract with a consulting service, and then the consultant would go from department to department? Or are you envisioning the individual departments having their own contract?
Well, I'll speak for myself and not the board. But I think it would be best if that fiduciary relationship, obviously, was between the elected official and the contractor. Obviously, the board has to approve the contracts, but I think it would be better that way. You know, and again, I'm just speaking without really thinking this through right now. So, but this, it's really ultimately up to the board as far as how that would be. But I would prefer personally that elected officials have a little more autonomy in that sense so they don't feel like the board is trying to navigate them to a destination. I don't know. Does anyone have any comments on that? Got a lively group here.
So, I think one of the things I would address is that everything, much of what we do is driven by state statute. And it's important that we start with that before we even look at the department necessarily. If, I mean, I guess I'd want your opinion on that. It's like, I know you have worked with other organizations, but everything is driven that we do is elected by the statutes. And the legislators are constantly changing things that we have to adapt to between elections, between tax rolls, and tax incentives with the treasurer. I just heard, I think, yesterday that their Speaker of the House has been, maybe the governor actually, was asking for a cut in, I think, their department budgets. So, when we face that, that to me would be like very, that we're on top of that, that we understand what we're doing and how these laws are impacting our departments. So, what are your thoughts on that?
And just for the record, that is a jackhammer and not a...
A machine gun.
Something else, yeah.
So, part of the study and part, a critical part of what I collect and what's important when you do these analyses and you do these assessments is a justification, right? A mission mandate. So, that's also part of it. So, that's part of me learning and assessing and coming in and is, what do you do? What tells you that you have to do it? And then how, why, and like, why do you do it, right? For the mission statement of the overall department or the overall county. And I think when you look at these budget cuts and when you look at some of these things that come in that happen from the state statute, I think historically, and again, this is not just the county, but I think historically, when businesses or bodies of, of people in an organization are reactionary, I think you constantly can live in that infinite space of reactionary effort. Things happen, oh, man, we got to cut some people. Things happen, oh, wow, okay, we can add some people, right? And it's just this constant reactionary. But there is a benefit, and there is a necessity, I would argue, of being more proactive and knowing what you have workload driver-wise. Like you're talking about capturing the events, right? What is it that the office does workload driver-wise? Because those things, for the most part, don't change, right? You have different statutes that come out that mandate that you guys do different things at different times. But for the most part, you have workload drivers that are essential to a department or to an organization that won't change. People will come and go. So, it's important to be proactive to understand what those are so that you can approach these times of change with a certain level of solidity and confidence and just a concrete foundational understanding of where you, of where you should be and where you stand. But with the, with the statutes and with the mandates and all that, that's part of the stuff that I, that I get of what tells you what you do and why and why you do it. And I think a lot of people that are on the working side of an organization, for the most part, don't understand that and don't know that. When I did this with the Army, you know, over four hundred times, you would talk to people in work centers of directorates. And it's like, well, what do you do? And they would say what they do. And it's like, okay, well, what tells you that you have to do that? Well, I don't know. I was just told to do it. So, I think when you, when you empower a workforce from the bottom up, and again, you back up what they're doing, why they're doing it, how does this serve the county? How does this serve the mission statement of the department? When you empower employees, empower a workforce, you get a much more engaged, responsive. You get retention. You get talent retention. I mean, it's just been all around. All-around positive thing.
Robert Norris. What, who, which law enforcement agencies have been a client of yours?
So, with this particular stuff, it's with the Army. So, it's big federal government.
No, I said, what law enforcement agencies have been a client of yours?
A client?
Yes.
Yeah, so I've, I've only done workforce and manpower in this assessment-type work for the Army, federal, federal government.
Okay, so you don't have any law enforcement agency clients?
No.
Okay.
One of the other things, too, while this is a benefit for the elected officials, is that, again, if you can make your case numerically about the need for the money, it makes it a lot easier for the board to allocate that money when it can see it compared to other elected officials, that we can address your issue this year and address the other elected's another year because you can see the absolute need of how, you know, where, where the money, the resources need to be allocated. And Steve, I think you would agree that that's how most organizations do that, where they, they establish reports that show where the greatest need is in order to address some of their issues. And that's one of the things that would be beneficial, too, for the elected officials if we could see that need because it would make it much easier to, you know, allocate the funds as opposed to hearing, well, you don't care about us, or, you know, we need it badly, or we're in dire situation. The numbers tell the story, and you can't argue with that.
Can I? So, the, and another important part of this whole methodology in this whole study is it's not a one-done, right? So, it's, it's one thing to come in, establish a benchmark, establish a baseline. But a baseline doesn't really mean a lot if there's not anything after that, right? There has to be a pursuance of where we go after the baseline, right? So, with the Army, with these directorates, depending on the size of the directorate, and I'm not saying that big federal government is the standard of the way that we should all live our lives, by far. But the size of the directorates, there's a congressionally mandated cycle that they have to do these studies, right? So, USAMA has to come in and do these studies on a three- or five-year cycle, depending on the size of the organization. Because everything changes. Things change. You have surge efforts, right? You have workload that is considered backlog that you never got to. You've got workload that you know is coming on the horizon because we're going to start a new war. We're going to do something. So, you've got these things coming. So, you've got projected, which right now isn't in play, but in two years, it will be. You've got, like I said, you've got this surge effort. So, if something's going to happen, you're going to put a bunch of resources to it, but then that surge is going to end. It's not going to be enduring. So, then you, so then you, so I'm throwing out these terms because now I'm getting into the specifics of like a study and what it is, but these terms matter. Defining terms matter. Because if you're going to tell me, well, I need more, if you can define what more is, it's kind of hard to do. But when you can, when you can define terms to have a discussion, that's the only way to have a discussion. It's when you can define terms before you even engage in a discourse, right? So, enduring workload, surge workload, backlog, projected, indirect, direct, assumed, all these different terms that go into these assessments really help paint a complete holistic picture of how are things operating? So that, like Commissioner Matarri is saying, that report is there to validate the effort taken in the way the county is being ran, but then also the commissioners as a body have the ability to say, well, now I can see the whole picture. Now we, now we agree on defined terms. We can have a discussion, a discourse about the need because we can, we have a definition of terms. Right now, it's just kind of free-floating, free-form.
So, Robert Norris, can, have you ever dealt with different entities with, like, judges and prosecutors' offices? Because we've identified many areas of efficiency, but when you go to a judge's meeting and they tell you that, well, thank you for your recommendation, but your job is to house the inmates. Our job is to sentence inmates. So, do you, do you, I'm kind of struggling to see... So do you, do you, I'm, I'm kinda struggling to see where this would apply in law enforcement.
Yeah, so I'll take, I'll take the example out of the law enforcement specific and I'll go back to the individual departments and the question about individual contractors or having the county contractors in the whole. So because different departments, and it, again, it's not just counties, but different departments work with each other, right? So there's like this baton tossing, baton passing, overlapping of working together to get things done. So one process might cross over a couple of different departments. I would argue, and I don't mean to be against Commissioner Tari, but I would argue that it is important to do it holistically and comprehensively with the whole county because my job is truly to come in and learn what everybody does. So as I learn and as I assess the needs and as I have the conversations with the law enforcement, I can figure out and really have those discussions of like, well, this is how it goes when you sentence somebody and then you jail them and this is the process in which goes through, cause I have no idea. And that, that, that's the benefit really, cause I have no idea because then there's really, there's really a way and a possibility to have things explained thoroughly to a third party that's removed from, removed from the circle, I guess. So that the understanding that I get of all the things that is done in all these departments is really kind of a holistic, genuine view of it, right? You have to learn what to do.
I, I see some groups here in this county are going to interpret this as a contract county manager.
As a what?
As a contract county manager. Some, some groups in this county will perceive that as a contract county.
Sheriff, you may not have been here when I said this, but first of all, I'm not suggesting that any elected official use the Star of the Sea Consulting, one. Two, that every organization, it's not the profession that they're in, it's the events that you're trying to capture. It's events. Events, when you capture them, can be put into a report format to make decisions, okay? So I understand that you're very focused on the profession, but your profession has reports too. In fact, many large agencies are able to provide lots of reports about events that occur within law enforcement. That in essence is what the discussion is about. And that way, when those events are captured and they can be put into a report format, we can look and say, okay, this is why we need to put money into hiring more people in this organization or this entity over another. And that's really, i- it's about making better decisions. It's not about having a consultant run the county or become anything like that. It's really about, we don't have reports. You know, again, as a commissioner, like I've said, don't tell me, show me. You should be able to articulate illustratively what your needs are within a large organization. And that in essence is the point of this conversation. So it's not really meant to have someone take over the county or be a contract or anything like that.
I'm, I'm, I'm just saying what my experience has been with the county manager. I, I'm not saying it is, I'm just saying that it might be interpreted. I'm not saying it is, but I'm saying it might be interpreted in some groups. That, that's all.
Well, I would argue, let's start getting some reports together and then we can have that discussion. But right now, I know this board doesn't get any reports. And so I think that's really just the first step. And Steve, I would be happy to take you up, like I said, on at least entertaining or testing this out so that we could put something together. And I think you know the value of that too.
Cause this is something that's always not at me in the background, this to-
I'm sorry, Steve, microphone.
Pausing whether I wanna say this or not, but I'm going to. I feel for commissioners when they have to allocate capital and how they allocate that capital is based on this disparate information. And I can speak with some authority that in the historical past, it's the one who screams the loudest that gets the most capital allocation. And from my perspective, it would be nice that if there was a methodology, a reporting mechanism, a structure, organization, that at least out, helped the board when they make those difficult decisions, okay, I'm going to allocate this amount of money, this amount of capital for this type of activity. Because in the past, the way that I've seen it, it is, is a little bit half passive. And that information that makes the board be able to make supportive decisions, that I understand. They're probably gonna be a lot more closer to agreeing with those decisions. And I'll end it there.
Thank you. Anyone, anyone have any other questions?
Just statement.
Sure.
So I, I think this is a really good idea and I think going for an RFP or an RFQ process, if you're letting individual EOs maybe pick the company that they wanna work with, that may be a path to go forward. And especially, I think it's going to be, if we end up holistically, which I think the, if we get, you know, a company that all the EOs can agree on, we may only end up with one company. But I think that going down that path to get a scope of work and, and that kind of information so the EOs feel more comfortable with company coming in.
Okay, well, maybe we could have a discussion, at least entertain Steve Matheson's idea as a, a beginning, you know? Uh, that, there you go. I don't know if I'd characterize it that way, but we'll start off with a Baskin Robbins sampler spoon and see how that goes.
I, I guess I would say what Leslie was saying is I, if we do this as a body, I would say more as than elected officials, I would think it would make more sense to do, if we did RFQ or RFI. I, I don't think multiple companies make sense to me, like, because we could have-
The data won't match.
Yeah.
It'll look different.
Well, I think it's the standardization in the terms that's most important.
Yeah.
But I understand and I think it's something that, you know, if people are conceptually okay with, we can at least start with the treasurer's office.
Yeah.
And then revisit this subject later. But I think it's also important that, you know, as elected officials, we all run on the campaign platform of being conservatives about not squandering tax dollars. And this is a good opportunity to show that we're not squandering tax dollars, that it's not just anecdotal stories, that here's the reports that show we're running an efficient operation and we're doing everything we can to not spend your money to the citizens frivolously. So unless anyone has anything else, I'll thank Jeremy for coming out. I appreciate it.
Thank you for your time. I really appreciate it. Thanks for the questions too.
All right, on to number two, updated computer policy including artificial intelligence guidance, Commissioner Duncan.
Uh, yes, I sent out an email to elected officials June eighteenth. I heard no response. The board approved the policy on July eighth. It has been combined with the computer policy. HR will be bringing forth a resolution and get, getting it out. But everybody has a copy of it already from that June eighteenth email. So mostly I just wanted to ask, is there any EO who is using AI in, in any form right now? Do they, you plan to use it now that we have a policy? Just where are we at?
The treasurer's office uses AI with ChatGPT. We have discussed using AI as a tool on our website, but we haven't moved forward.
Microphone, Joe.
Sorry.
We've discussed potentially using AI on our website as a tool to help reduce the number of phone calls that our employees are having to take, but we haven't moved forward with that. But it has been a conversation.
I went to a training with the Secretary of State's office a couple of weeks ago and I need to review the policy one more time, but one of my concerns, one of the things they mentioned is any kind of personal data that you would put in there. I've heard people, you know, they'll use it for emails, right, to write a better email. So if that, if there's any type of personal information in there that's being fed somewhere, right? So I do wanna look at the policy one more time. I had it in my office. I didn't bring it down, so I'm sorry about that. Because of just what I learned there, I, I think we do need to take in consideration. I know it's an easy tool to go to, but if we're putting any identical, personal identification information out there, we need to consider that.
It's spelled out in the policy to not to, and that they have to get supervisors' permission essentially to use the tools. So yeah, I think you're, you're gonna be covered.
But I would say, like, if you're trying to craft an email, and you're just, hey, let's tighten this up and make it better, that inform, it like, doesn't seem like you're going out and doing research, right? I think a lot of people utilize that. I just want people to be aware of that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and, and read, read the policy and if you think some tweaks need to be made because IT is very well aware of such a fast-paced, changing industry that there will be updates to the policy as new things emerge. So if you need a change, let me know. Yeah.
Anything else?
Our, our office is not utilizing it at all.
I, I'm aware that a couple of people may have used it, like you said, to write a better email to order a memo or articulately, but we've, we've expressed our own concerns with my office about AI. You know, I've told my people I, I don't want that substituting them doing their own research and briefing. I don't want anything filed with the courts that, that has been used with AI, so.
Anything else?
Ditto with, with Stansson.
Is that it? Okay, on to item three, Idaho Association of Counties representative. For counties over one hundred fifty thousand population, it's a discussion item and Commissioner Duncan again.
I've been in this role since Barry McHugh stepped out of it. He became busy and asked for somebody else to step in. So again, it's time for the elected officials to agree for someone to be on the IAC board. And so I'm just bringing it forward to see if there's interest.
You're currently there.
I'm currently there.
Well, Leslie, if you don't wanna do it, I will do it, cause you've been doing it for a while.
I, I don't care. I'll continue to do it, but if you want an opportunity to do it, then, then absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, any other elected official ha- have an interest in this, no?
I was on that board and it, it's kinda interesting.
Yeah.
I think you would like it.
Yeah, okay.
You can, you could, you play cards right, you can make some good movements.
Yeah, okay. Well, then that's maybe something we can discuss offline, get a little better sense as to what you're doing. Okay, anything else? All right, that's item three. Next up, public comment. Hearing none. Oh, yes.
What is the term?
I thought it was two years, but I'm not a hundred percent sure, cause I've just been doing it ever since Barry did that. Yeah, but I, I think it's two years.
Okay, no public comment, nine forty-two, meeting adjourned. Thank you all.